We're going to call the meeting to order. We have a lot of people that want to speak, so I want to make sure we get through everybody. So I'm going to ask the clerk to read the preamble.
Shh, shh, shh.
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the State of Illinois and the ordinance of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, November 13th, 2023 at 6:30 PM, in person in the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, Mayor Patrick Lovickson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast, NISTOWN, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast, NISTOWN, RCN Channel 17, and AT&amp;T U-verse 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There's a five-minute time limit for speakers.
Broadcast on the monitors upstairs in case people want to watch. Thank you very much. We'll call the roll call, please.
Thank you. Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
Alderman Dolik?
Here.
Treasurer Tivitts?
Here.
Mayor Lovickson?
Here.
And City Clerk Pajajnuk is out with previous notification.
Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I know a lot of people, this might be your first meeting, so I'm just going to let you know, you know, how this is going to go as far as being able to talk. Everybody who turned in a sheet to speak about the same thing, all 17 of these are the same. We'll have five minutes, it's a clock. I know this is a little early, but I just want to get this all through now so you guys can hear it before that starts. They'll present the development and that... First, you guys will get your chance to speak for your five minutes, and then they'll do their presentation.
The presentation first.
Presentation first?
Yeah.
Okay, presentation first, and then you guys. But it won't be a question, it won't be a question-answer session, just so you know. It's not like you're going to be able to turn around and say, "Well, what about this?" You're going to tell the council, you'll be addressing the council on what you feel. I know a lot of you, so I just want to start out saying I love seeing people here, so you can see what we do, because usually we have a hard time getting the newspaper guy here to write about our meeting. So just be, be nice. Being caustic does not make your point better. You'll end up getting, you know, maybe what you don't want, because people will be like, "Hey, too bad, I'm going to just..." Really, we're people too. We're just like you, we're your neighbors, we're here to do a function, and just tell us what you think, but remember, we live in the town too, so that's that. We'll continue on. Item three, approval of the minutes. Motion to approve the minutes?
So move, Morgan Adams?
Second.
Anderson.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Abstain.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Item five, appointments confirmation and proclamations. I am looking for a motion to reappoint Bill Kearns to the Prospect Heights Police Pension Board for a two-year term, I believe it's in January?
Does January be the next meeting, yes?
That's, that's...
For the police pension board, yes.
Okay, so he needs to be reappointed for a two-year term for January 1st.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Morgan Adams?
We have a motion in a couple seconds. Roll call, please.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Okay. So we're going, item seven, we have no consent agenda today, old business. We have item A, the presentation by ML Development of a development plan for 506-508 Camp McDonald Road rezoning property R1 to R2, and request for referral to the Plan Commission Zoning Board. So I'd ask you guys to come up, state your name, and make your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Shees. I'm an architect based out of Oak Park, Illinois, and I'm glad to be here. I'd like to make an opening statement. So we prepared a new presentation for you. We appeared before you two or three weeks ago, and I was humbled by the comments from Alderman, from the mayor, but specifically from neighbors. Humbled in the sense that I came, I lead the design group, and we came with a specific... In my business, we call it product, but they were homes, they are homes. We came prepared for product homes that were not a good fit for your community. So we went back to the drawing board. We worked on a new design that was less dense, it was substantially different. I think, as Alderman and Mr. Mayor, you've seen the redesign, but I also can tell you that we can read, we can read the headwinds. In consultation with my client, we are not folks that swim upstream. The fact that all the neighbors, all your neighbors, and would be neighbors of ours if we move forward, that these folks came out tonight is a testament to the fact that we still are going against significant headwinds, and we don't do that. So with respect, respect to everybody's time, respect to staff time, to Alderman and your time, and all the energy that has brought us to this point, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that the documents we submitted, the application we submitted, be, I'm going to use the word tabled, it's a legal term, but maybe there's a different word to it, as we, and again, this is in consultation with my client, that we consider coming forward with a different type of home here, one that is a better fit, and that would be a single-family home development. That would take a considerable amount of time, much more energy, so to speak more deeply about that tonight, I don't think is worth the time. So again, respectfully, and respecting everybody's time and energy, we would request that from the council.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you, you know, you guys have been very good to work with as far as approachable to listen to what, you know, we had said from the beginning, and that's commendable. I mean, you did come to us and ask us what you could do different in that, so I do appreciate that. I don't know if there's anything we have to do, so if you're just, if you're just pulling it to look and see about doing something different, then there's no action needed.
Thank you for the commendation, but it really is my client's call. I agree with it 100%, but it's, at the end of the day, it's his call. So thank you, thank you again.
Thank you.
And I'd like to turn around and say thank you.
Sure.
(applause)
Can I just give a simple question? If this new design...
There's no new design, he's pulling the whole thing, he's saying they might think about coming back. We don't know about it, this is, I'm shocked, I thought we were going to go through a presentation, so if you're thinking this is some kind of plan, or there's some new design, there is nothing, nothing, I can assure you of that. There is not anything on the table, and I know I can say that, and he can say that, some will believe us, some won't, but there really, really isn't. So this is, this is new, I had no idea that this was going to happen.
This decision is minutes old.
I hope you all stick around for the meeting, so you can see what we do twice a month, but that's okay, if you go, I'd be fine.
But we'd like you guys to stay, though. Stay.
You can see how the sausage is made. All right, so no actions required, we'll go on to new business. Item A, nine, request for first reading waiver for ordinance 02326, a staff memo, and an ordinance establishing a Class B liquor license for Arminetti Liquors at 1 North Wolf Road, Prospect Heights. This is a waiver of the first reading request, so I need a motion for that.
So move.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Okay, ask for roll call.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item B is ordinance 0326, staff memo, and ordinance for the approval establishing a Class B liquor license for Arminetti Liquors, 1 North Wolf Road, Prospect Heights. This is the second reading, so I need a motion to approve.
So move, Morgan Adams?
Second, Anderson.
We have a first and a second. I have a quick question for Jill, is the increase built into this ordinance, the increase in the number of licenses, do we have to do that?
We have, I believe we have a license available.
Otherwise, okay.
Yeah, there was a previous liquor store that closed.
And also, just for, the request came about from, for waiver of first reading from the owner, and it's basically because roughly about 40% of alcohol sales are between Thanksgiving and New Year's, so this enables them to get their foot in the door as a business manager.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the approval of ordinance 02326. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just request a brief pause? If some people want to leave, you're welcome to do that.
Don't feel awkward.
If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay, it's just that it's a little bit difficult to hear from my standpoint, as people are discussing the situation and coming and going. So if, if that's all right, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, yeah, if you want to go, we'll wait, we'll do a couple minute pause.
Call the council.
Okay, so we'll continue on. Item C is a resolution, R2330, it's a staff memo and resolution for subdivision of 1418 East Olive Street, Arlington Heights. This goes, well, let's get a motion and a second, and then we can talk about it. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second, Dan, do you maybe want to just comment on it?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a situation where we had a number of lots that were platted prior to 1998, and in 1998, the city council passed an ordinance that required any of these sublots or meets-and-bounds lots actually become their own single lot of record. This lot happened to be one of three lots that made up an entire lot over off of Olive Road, and as such, their building a new house where required to create their own set of rules or subdivision. And so it's an administrative requirement, and it went through the Plan Commission and was unanimously approved for a plat of subdivision to a single lot of record.
Okay, we have a first and a second, if there's no questions?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
So roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D is ordinance 02327, staff memo and ordinance for the approval of a variation for reduced corner side yard and reduced reversed corner side yard for 408 Nawada Place, Prospect Heights. This is a first reading, so no action is required. If you have any questions, Dan could answer them, but this will be at the...
Actually, I had a question, so did you read in there that two of the neighbors came to speak to the case?
Yes, there were two neighbors that lived directly across the street who came to oppose fences. Their main argument is when they moved into the subdivision before the city was a city, fences were not allowed in the old neighborhood association covenants. However, those are not enforceable under the city rules. The Plan Commission listened to the testimony and voted unanimously to grant a, recommend the variation as presented tonight.
Okay, yeah, I'm just curious what they were, what their objections were, thank you.
They just didn't like fences.
Yeah, got it, check.
So this is informational only, it's the first reading, the second reading will be at the December 11th?
November 27th.
November 27th, already moving too quick, yeah. November 27th meeting will be the second reading for approval. Item E, same thing, it's a first reading for ordinance 02328, staff memo and ordinance approving the addition of a municipal tree ordinance to the Prospect Heights City Code. This is a first reading. Mark, if you would like to comment on that?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City of Prospect Heights has been a award winner for Arbor Day Foundation and the Tree City USA for over 20 years. They did an audit in the last couple of years, looking at all the municipalities involved in their city code, and how they reflect the trees, damage hazardous, things like that, and they looked at ours and gave us some clerical changes to meet, so we meet their profile. It's not anything that handcuffs any of our neighbor, our neighborhood or residents, it doesn't clearly define that you can't take down trees, but it does help with trying to plant, not plant trees that are problem trees, like a weeping golden willow, things like that. We already had a lot of stuff in our code, but this kind of encompassed and puts it back together, so more of a clerical adjustment for us, so we can continue forward. If we didn't make these slight changes, we would be out of the running for Tree City USA. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Second reading will be at the end of November. Item 10, staff and elected officials and commission reports. We'll start with elected officials to my left, anybody have a report?
I do not have a report, but I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next weekend, next week.
Elected officials to the right? No reports?
No report, but again, wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving next weekend.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go, staff reports on the right? No?
Yes. I have a request, actually, it's from the Natural Resources Commission. Typically, this, about this time of year, they come to the council with their request to do burns of the prairie. The Chair, Agnes Wornarski, is a certified burn manager. They've done this for several years, in fact, we've placed this on the consent agenda. This year, they're a little bit late, because a prerequisite, they submit a permit application to the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. That, they came in about a month later, I just got the request from the NRC today, and they're asking for council permission to conduct the burns, as they've done the last several years without incident. They, it's important to do it now, because there's really specific moisture conditions, wind conditions, and they feel in the next two weeks is when they would like to do this. So they're asking for council permission tonight.
Can we just do a straw poll?
You can ask for, if there's, you know, the council has a direction or...
Okay, is everybody okay with that? Any issues, they've done this for years, they're really good at it.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Everybody's good? We've seen this before, so it's not, it's not new.
Absolutely.
So you have your direction, thank you. Staff to the left, Karen, chief?
I just want to remind everybody, on the 19th, 20th, 21st, we'll be collecting food for the families of Prospect Heights, we've been there for seven years. You see a squad car out there, usually from about 3:00 PM to 8:00 or 9:00 PM, we feed between 60 and 90 families Thanksgiving dinners each year. So Tony's has a special bag, either a $10 or $15 bag, we collect it and distribute it before Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. So that's all the reports, we have no commission report.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I add one more thing?
Sure.
I forgot to mention, Saturday, November 25th, is the holiday tree lighting event that the city and the Park District put together and do at the Gary Morava Center. It starts at 5:00 PM. We've had a great tradition of doing this year after year. The Park District personnel are great at helping put this event together. Santa will be there, the Lions Club is bringing hot chocolate, the Garden Club is bringing hot cookies and little baked goods. It's a great time to bring your kids, bring your family out, and be part of what we have here in Prospect Heights. So that is Saturday, November 25th, starting at 5:00 PM. Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. One more item, and then we'll go to the comments, if people still want to make comments. Item 11, approval of warrants.
Are you talking about Rich Tivitts?
Yeah.
Do you want to say anything?
He would make sure he told us.
Yeah.
The city clerk agreed the...
Okay, thank you.
The warrants?
We have a total of $396,615.32, a November 1st, 2023 longevity public work specialty paychecks of $20,163.56, 11-3, 2023 payroll of $181,771.70, and a total warrant of $598,550.58.
Need a motion to approve?
So move, Morgan Adams?
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolik?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. And now we'll go on to the request to speak. I'm just going to read the names off, if you're here, just let me know and come up to the microphone. Alan Kosoff, come on up. State your name and...
Alan Kosoff, 11 East Leon and Prospect Heights. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff, thank you for your service. Prior to living in Prospect Heights, I was a resident of Wheeling for nine years, living at Astor Place Townhomes. When my wife and I decided that we wanted to have children, our search for our forever home ensued, and we didn't have to look too far. Next month will be my 11th year in Prospect Heights, and we are now proud parents, our two daughters are nine and five. Our neighborhood has blossomed over the last few years. It's been great seeing young families come to town, and we all share the same reason why we chose Prospect Heights. The feeling of being somewhere else, the peacefulness, the charm of the neighborhood, we are the envy of other communities. I have a prominent business on Chicago's North Shore, many of my clients ask me where do I live, and they are very curious when I say Prospect Heights, and then when I brag about my half-acre lot and the beautiful property and neighborhood that we have, we are the envy. I hear it all the time. The wide-open spaces, our half-acre lots, the privacy, the quiet enjoyment, that's what was at stake tonight, and I am very happy that the applicant and the representative of the applicant, the architect, realize why we came here tonight, and why we want to preserve the R1 zoning in our neighborhoods. We want conformity. The proposal was egregious, and I was very satisfied with their decision to retract their Prior to tonight's meeting, I had the pleasure of getting to know my neighbors, and I must say that I am even more proud to be a resident of Prospect Heights. Everyone understood what was at stake to preserve our R1 zoning in Prospect Heights. Our petition to preserve the R1 zoning in Prospect Heights had 450 signatures, with over 6,200 views, and over 200 shares, and 35 people pledged dollars to promote it. Now, if that doesn't send a message and signal, I don't know what does, and that was all done in a very short period of time. I guess the last thing I want to say is that I do want the land to be developed, and my neighbors share the same desire, and Mayor, I share the same opinion as you, and I quote your words, "It's the density that I can't live with." So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Roger, Roger Holgrave? No?
Hey, why don't we just ask if anyone else would like to speak, maybe?
Well, let's just go...
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? And we certainly, we heard the first testimony, right? So we don't really need to repeat everything he said, but if you have anything new to add to, like, that's always helpful, you know, so if anyone would like to speak?
Yeah, is there anybody that's, there's 17 people, anybody here that filled out a form that wants to speak?
Yeah, come on up.
Come on up.
Yeah.
Someone else want to be first?
Go ahead. Just state your name.
My name is Peter Gitlin. My wife and I live at 106 West Elaine Circle in Prospect Heights. We bought the property six years ago, very happy, for all the reasons that the other gentleman just shared. We moved here because our daughter-in-law was married to a very sick man, we wanted to support her, he passed away last month. We really like it here, and although the gentleman who just spoke said he'd like to see the property developed, I have, I'd like to have you consider the other side. I often see notices about how nice it is, our Isaac Walden Park, and it's one of the last remaining, I don't know if you call it wild, but something along that order, areas in Cook County, and that's, that's publicized and appreciated. And it seems like this narrow property that we're talking about could be something similar, but I know the big drawback is that the city would have to buy it, and you probably don't have the money, but I think it would be something to be considered. It could be developed into another, I don't know if wild is the right word or not, but undeveloped area with natural grasses, natural trees, natural habitat, natural wildlife, which is already there. And I think if it was publicized in the proper way, it could be another addition to the My wife and I have been married over 50 years, we've lived in a lot of rural places. Back then, we considered ourselves kind of granola hippies, which I don't know if anyone says that anymore, but we really appreciate Prospect Heights, and we hope whatever happens to that property will be done in, in the manner that all these people that were here tonight would like to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, hello, thank you. I'm Tia Hansen-Tomlin of Prospect Heights, 1581 Cove. It's not my first time speaking to the council, but I want to address rezoning. but I want to address rezoning, the power of rezoning, and how we always say, "We need more money." We need more money. At the end of January this year, Kevin Gribanow, Regional Director of Dam Safety Inspections and the Regulatory Commission, gave a presentation. Did any of the council members listen to him? Go to... I don't, I didn't see any of you there, but he talked about flooding and that it's going to continue for us. It will not be deterred. We do have an off-balance on rain right now, but when it's going to come, it's going to hit hard, and we will flood. Have we done anything to arrest the flooding potential? No. We really haven't addressed this issue. Did we agree as a council to cover more land with concrete and asphalt? Yes. Did we rezone a warehouse to be a plastic manufacturing plant in the backyard of a populated area in Prospect Heights? Yes. Without regard to what the community thought about having a plastic manufacturing plant in their backyard. When the neighbors of Prospect and Drake off Elmhurst Road objected to a multi-dwelling being installed where they lived? Did you listen? No. They're going to get a 69 unit in their backyards. Rezoned. Did you ask for a sidewalk to be installed? Yes. Now you're prepared to rezone more sections of Prospect Heights from R1 to R2. Multi-dwellings occupy an enormous part of Prospect Heights. A lot of them. Whether you go east or not, they're there. And the services of the police and the fire department in the protection of the people who live in these multi-dwellings can create stress when crime or fires occur, and both have happened. So are we deciding that we should be a surveillance society? Because we can't rezone anymore in our existing multi-dwellings. We're not going to get rid of them, but we're going to put cameras up, and we're going to start taking license plates down. And that increases the workload for our police department, who just want to keep us safe. So are we going to plan on how many multi-dwellings Prospect Heights can tolerate? What is our goal on population density? Do we have any guidelines that can direct you council members to work on our behalf for the most of the people who live in multi-dwellings who never come here? Don't even hear about the council meetings, but you say, "We're on the internet. We put it in the paper. They can find out." Well, it doesn't happen, as you know. So please give some thought when it comes to community needs. How do council members define their decisions? Is it based on happiness in the community? Healthy? Neighborhood involvement? What will our community enjoy when these changes are voted upon? It's something for you guys to consider when you're making these decisions for thousands of people. And multi-dwellings come with their own level of problems and concerns. So rezoning is a powerful tool, but use wisdom, not tax dollars, as a guide. Thank you very much.
I could spend an hour rebutting that, but we won't. I promise we won't do that. But I don't know where that came from. Who's next? Anybody else want to speak?
I'll go.
Come on.
Mine's slightly different tune. Good evening. My name is Megan Faster, and I live at 504 East Camp McDonald Road, the property that's directly next to the proposed development. And I cannot thank you two enough for doing what you did. You got me, too. Thank you Prospect Heights neighbors, and thank you both, Michael and John, for listening to our concerns and respecting them. I would first like to start... Holy cow, I am so sorry. I would first like to start by reading some of my own stats. 10, 5, 2, 1. And way too many to count. 10 years ago, we have lived in what we thought would be our forever home. It is our hidden gem and a place that we have loved with all of our hearts. Five families in our neighborhood have become our family to us, where our daughters can run to their houses and vice versa with no questions asked. And if you don't have kids, this means nothing to you. But if you do have kids, having a place where your children feel home and safe is truly a blessing and very hard to come by these days. To my hu... Two, my husband and I have had two beautiful girls who play in our driveway on a daily basis and absolutely love where they live, in every sense of the word. From their schools to their teachers and friends, they have created their own little lives, surrounded by love and support of our community. I am the worst, and you guys are never going to forget me. So here I am. Come over to my house anytime you want. I won't be crying. I'm usually really fun. One, 504 East Camp McDonald Road will hopefully remain our forever home. And for that, I implore both our city and council to listen to us and our concerns. And I understand that that was not ideal, having a million people walking out the door, talking in high volume. That is not all of us. We truly love where we live, clearly. And last but certainly not least, way too many to count. This stands for the hours, days, months, where my husband and I would work on our house between naps, after bedtime, and during commercial breaks, during any Bears, Bulls, or Blackhawks games. We do this because we are proud of where we live. I am stating these stats because this is my heart and soul and the reason why I'm here tonight. It is because of my love for my home and the love of our neighbors that have become our family. My wondering after this meeting is how we can keep 506 and 508 R1. If one of you are willing to consult me on these matters after the meeting, that would be great. If you need me to run for office, I don't mind either. I can have some time on my back pocket, maybe. Thank you again for your time and your consideration and your patience with this matter. I really appreciate it, and I will hold myself together next time I'm here.
We will hold you against... I will next see you at the next meeting. Next meeting. Okay.
This is our date night.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Okay, okay. Go Home Depot.
My name is Karen Casper. I live at 413 Walden in Prospect Heights, and I just come here to represent the history of Prospect Heights because I'm one of those kids who grew up... We moved to Prospect Heights when I was seven years old, and the city wasn't incorporated then. There was a Prospect Heights Improvement Association. I had those kind of parents who cared and wanted to preserve Prospect Heights and the character of Prospect Heights. And at that time, other cities were annexing sections of Prospect Heights, and we had to decide what we're going to do. So obviously, the concerned citizens got together, and eventually we incorporated. So my dad, because at the time, he was the president of the Prospect Heights Improvement Association, was one of the main candidates and one for mayor. So my parents are Dick and June Wolf, and they cared about Prospect Heights. And so as a kid, from seven to, you know, I saw the campaign for the city, everything through high school. It was kind of my formative, how it's important. And they wanted to preserve the character of Prospect Heights. It is different than Mount Prospect. It is different than Arlington Heights. And yes, we have our sections of different things, but there is something special. And I think that's what was worth fighting for all those years, and I think that's what people are here for today. So I guess I just wanted to bring that back. There's been a lot of people over a lot of years who've cared and loved and showed up. And I now, obviously, live, I've lived 55 years once, you know, on Tully, by Tully Park, and now on Walden. So I just, I know it's important. So I hope you all hear the residents.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I tie with you for 55 years, too. So we're here the same amount of time. Anybody else?
Yeah. I'll just reiterate a little bit what you guys were saying.
Ladies, you know who I am, and know my aggressiveness. And 905 East Camp McDonald Road, of which we've had... I moved in in 83. I'm Janet Fuller. And I have to tell you that thank you for what you have done, what you have said. And I didn't get a chance to sign anything, but I'm on the other side of Ward 2. And I can tell you that I moved into... I also... That lady that was just there, she is actually working at the school where I retired, in the same department. Anyway, I would just simply say this. And I remember your father, Dick Wolf. I've experienced a lot, as a lot of you know, at my place on 905 East Camp McDonald Road. I attended so many city council meetings in my early years here as a resident, back in 83. And as a result, there have been lots of changes of which we still need to do. And so I was on the creek commission, the first one and the second one. And I understand the issue that we certainly have with water and potential flooding, as you mentioned. I was concerned when this development was told to me. Of course, more water runoff, building size, coming into the creek, and where was it going to go? Well, I knew where it was going to go. It had to come corner of my place again. Anyway, that's not really why I was concerned. I like what you said. Way back when, and I can't quote the exact slogan that maybe your father had said, "It is a small city surrounded by big ones." We are so fortunate that we've been able to keep our trees, our quiet spaces, and the east side, where we don't really get a lot of attention, but the east side down on Camp McDonald Road is pretty precious with the side streets that are going off of it and those communities. And there's single-family homes. And to add that structure, and I'm glad that you had withdrawn, and I like the idea that maybe a park would be nice to go in there. That could be very nice. And not cutting down more trees when we know now the environment, we need to have more trees. I'm just simply reiterating what the positive was here. And then I think if we continue to keep that same emphasis of what Prospect Heights is and what it was, it was a city that was a city, but not a city. We didn't have the land, and we can't compete or begin to compete, dollar-wise or otherwise, with Wheeling, Arlington Heights, or Mount Prospect. We never had the land, but we had the beauty. And that's what I think our residents are saying here. We need to really keep that in view, that that's really precious, and use the money that what we need to have for things we need to improve for what we have, which, of course, let's pray we don't have any more floods. And let's see what we can do to reestablish some of those issues that we have now and that actually we can take. Ward 2, while we know Rob Roy was built, it remained a low process and a nice view there. And it would be nice that we keep whatever we might build. And I do agree, let's keep it R1, not R2. I know money's important, but this city is more beautiful than that. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Go, Rich.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Sure, Rich, yeah.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but now I do want to say something because we have an audience here, and they've expressed some things that are dear to my heart. And, but I will, a little bit of history. I discovered Prospect Heights.
And the internet.
When I started dating Pam Roth, I don't know if you know Al and Rosemary Roth? No? Rosemary Roth Park? Oh, you don't know Rosemary Roth Park? Okay, well, Rosemary was part of the park district's board, I guess, and she kind of helped develop the park district. And I knew nothing about any of that stuff. You know, I got to know them, and they're just fine people. And I live far away. And nevertheless, the dating didn't work. I mean, eventually, we both moved on. But that was many years ago, when I was in a rock and roll band. Anyway, I moved in in 79, the winter of the snow, without a snowshelter and a single-family home, which has served me well. Nevertheless, what I wanted to say is really mostly about city water because I've been on city water forever.
They weren't talking about drinking water, though. They were talking about...
I know that. But water's water. As far as I'm concerned, you know, I don't care which way it goes. Nevertheless, I really think that we do ourselves a disservice by not having a unified city water system, mostly for fire protection. I mean, yes, they can bring the water to the fire. Our fire district does a great job of doing what most people would think was unbelievable. And of course, going back to the city hall fire, and if you remember that, if you've been here since 2006, a disaster. But they, there were what? 11 fire crews on scene during that time, and they worked their butts off to put the fire out. Anyway, I'm rambling. But I just wanted to take a survey amongst you folks. I mean, I know you're all in an area that I'm very familiar with. And I don't know what everyone's attitude is about city water. I know the biggest thing is that we don't want another water bill. I mean, we've got, we have to pay for well pumps, and we have to pay for well drilling and, you know, maintenance and maybe bottled water, if you're that concerned, and all that stuff. You know, it all adds up. But it's fire protection that's the big thing, really. And even though I think we're lucky to have insurance rates that are so low, and the reason is, we're all in ZIP Code 60070, and half of that ZIP Code has city water. So the rating system, rating people, don't quite get the fact that there is a whole bunch of single-family homes without fire protection available right at their doorstep, basically. And that's the reason they grant us such benefits of a low fire insurance rate. Okay. How many people here would like to see a unified water system in Prospect Heights? Raise your hands. Not too many. So I'm curious about that because that's, you know, I've been expressed how I feel very passionately about it.
20 minutes as a guest.
And I'm just curious. Somebody who's against water, why would they be anti? Sir? I'm sorry, I'm taking over the meeting.
You're in minute 45.
Okay, okay. You can come on, half-five minutes.
Peter Shadko, I live at 702 Gregor Court, 20 years in Prospect Heights. When it comes to water, I think there are three conditions would be much more amiable to it. One is allow us to keep the wells.
That's already granted in the ordinance.
Well, last time it was, last time this was under discussion, it was probably 10, 15 years ago. You were proposing to cap the wells. The second is make it affordable, figure out how. And the third is make it voluntary to hook up, at least for the first time. Because there's a lot of people on a single income. If you hit them with a $30,000, $40,000 bill, it's just not affordable for them. If you meet those three conditions, I think there'll be many more people that are being interested.
Sure, I understand. I have 46 seconds left.
44.
I am going to use them. I just want to say that we have an ordinance on the books that allows everyone to keep their well if they do hook up to city water. If city water came in, you would not be forced to hook up to city water. And as far as the cost, that I can't comment on because I really have no idea what it would cost.
I'm in Lake Clear, and I love this Lake Michigan water, so it's not that expensive.
There you go. Thank you very much. I cede my 20 seconds.
All right, so that is it. We have just the last... We don't have an executive session. We don't have an executive session at this meeting. Nothing to report back from executive session, so I look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second, Cameron.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.